Oh, do you have Macs not coming?
Okay. All right, I call the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown, trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. So first up, we have our closed session items. We have a number of items here on the agenda. We have item A, government code section 54957.6. Agent Designated Representatives Karen Resendez, Unrepresented Employee Associate Superintendent Human Resources. Item B, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Complaint. Item C, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Item D, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Associate Superintendent Dr. Camille Johnson, Employee Organization Antioch Education Association. Item E, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Associate Superintendent Dr. Camille Johnson, Employees Organization California School Employees Association Chapter 85. Item F, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Superintendent Dr. Darnice Williams, Employee Organization Antioch Management Association. And item G, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Superintendent Dr. Darnice Williams, Employee Organization Senior Management. We do have one public comment on item 2B. So that first public comment will be from Latoya Geeter.
Hi. I've been an employee here with the Antioch School District for 12 years. Been an outstanding employee. And on May 14th, an incident occurred. And now I'm getting terminated from my position. And I've been distraught about it. And I'm coming to you guys, I'm asking you guys for one fresh eyes, fresh look, fresh intake on it if possible, and to not terminate me because of a mistake of untrained, from what I know now, I wasn't trained on. And I'm just asking for your time to get more things together, for me and my team to get more things together. So a fresh take, a fresh look on this. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you. So next we'll go into closed session and we'll come back to open session at about 7:00 PM.
Great, I call back the meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Maya, can you establish a quorum?
Yes, trustee Brown, trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here.
So, next we have reports from closed session. So, the board met in closed session to discuss closed session items, and in closed session, the board took action to terminate the employment of a classified employee with a vote of four zero. In closed session, the board took action to suspend a classified employee without pay for five days with a vote of four zero. Moving on to see flag salutes, I will go ahead and lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Kobo Smith, will you read the land acknowledgement?
Antioch Unified School District acknowledges that we gather on the unceded ancestral homelands of the Bay Mewoc people. As guests, we humbly extend our gratitude to the Bay Mewoc elders and community. We recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland, and we affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. As the original stewards of this land, the Bay Mewoc understand the interconnectedness of all things and the importance of maintaining harmony with nature. Likewise, Antioch Unified School District commits to teaching our school community how to be responsible stewards of this land. Thank you.
Next, we have our superintendent's report. So, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Darnice Williams.
Good evening to our president, Antonio Hernandez, trustee, and to the trustees and to the cabinet of symbol. Here marks my second update as your superintendent of Antioch Unified School District. So, continuing with engagement with the community and our kickoff to the school year for the 25-26 school year season, we continue to visit schools. I am proud to say that we have touched each and every school within our district, all 24. We met the goal of making sure that we have visited at least one time each school and each department before the end of August. So, we're very proud about that. We have pictures here where we were greeted by the students. We shook hands. We participated in activities. Again, another quiz we were able to take. A quiz did better this time than the last time. And also had a chance to interact with our classified staff, meet some parents as well, and some community members. And thank you to the school board for joining us. And we had a very insightful opportunity and time with our families, our administrators, our teachers, and also our staff. And as you can see, we continue to engage. There are the list of schools from August 22nd. During our September board meeting, we will have those schools present. We were smiling. We hope to keep smiling throughout the year. And then, in addition, we were able to visit and attend middle school back-to-school night where, again, we continue to engage with the community. We listen not only to concerns but also celebrations, and also have an opportunity to walk around and to observe and to see the lessons and the work that students are engaging in within our classrooms throughout Antioch Unified School District.
Great, I call back the meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Maya, can you establish a quorum?
Yes, Trustee Brown, Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. So next we have reports from closed session. So the board met in closed session to discuss closed session items. And in closed session, the board took action to terminate the employment of a classified employee with a vote of four zero. In closed session, the board took action to suspend a classified employee without pay for five days with a vote of four zero. Moving on to see flag salutes, I will go ahead and lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Kobo Smith, will you read the land acknowledgement?
Antioch Unified School District acknowledges that we gather on the unceded ancestral homelands of the Bay Mewoc people. As guests, we humbly extend our gratitude to the Bay Mewoc elders and community. We recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland, and we affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples. As the original stewards of this land, excuse me, the Bay Mewoc understand the interconnectedness of all things and the importance of maintaining harmony with nature. Likewise, Antioch Unified School District commits to teaching our school community how to be responsible stewards of this land. Thank you.
Next, we have our superintendent's report. So I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Darnise Williams.
Good evening to our president, Antonio Hernandez, trustee, and to the trustees and to the cabinet of symbol. Here marks my second update as your superintendent of Antioch Unified School District. So continuing with engagement with the community and our kickoff to the school year for the 25, 26 school year season, we continue to visit schools. I am proud to say that we have touched each and every school within our district, all 24. We've met the goal of making sure that we have visited at least one time each school and each department before the end of August. So we're very proud about that. We have pictures here where we were greeted by the students. We shook hands, we participated in activities. Again, another quiz we were able to take. A quiz did better this time than the last time. And also had a chance to interact with our classified staff, meet some parents as well and some community members. And thank you to the school board for joining us. And we had a very insightful opportunity and time with our families, our administrators, our teachers, and also our staff. And as you can see, we continue to engage. There are the list of schools from August 22nd. During our September board meeting, we will have those schools present. We were smiling, we hope to keep smiling throughout the year. And then in addition, we were able to visit and attend middle school back to school night, where again, we continue to engage with the community. We listen not only to concerns but also celebrations. And also have an opportunity to walk around and to observe and to see the lessons and the work that students are engaging in within our classrooms throughout Antioch Unified School District. Elementary back to school night, we definitely had a presence at after school night, back to school night for elementary. And I thank also our board members and cabinet members for joining. That will be a routine presence for all of us is to continue to stay connected to all of our community members. We enjoyed the conversations. And also seemingly, the community was pretty pleased to see us in our presence. So had an opportunity also to attend the board presentation, I'm sorry, the bond presentation for Archer Park Bond and all of the plans that are coming forth. I did request that we would have the renderings available for everyone to visit, to see and review, not only on the website, but also within the offices and also here at the district office. And so it was a very, very detailed presentation, lots of questions from the parents and the community. And we look forward to seeing the outcome of the, of the final project over the few, next few years. Department onboarding, continuing to receive information and learning about each of our departments. Thus far, I have met with the Ed Services Department, including learning information and reviewing data regarding our ELD learners, our emergent English learners, student support services, special education, curriculum and instruction, elementary and secondary support, also with the transportation department, business services, and facilities. Safety and wellbeing of our students and staff. I would like to take this opportunity just to send our hearts, our warm thoughts of safety and concern and comfort. As we know, there was an incident today. And we just want to take a few minutes to send our love, our prayers, and our warmth off to the families in Minneapolis. And we all know what happened. But I also want to take this time to say that we do take safety very, very seriously. We are working to ensure as best as possible that we are putting in safeguards to make sure that we are protecting the wellbeing of not only our students, but our staff, our visitors, our volunteers at every campus. So here are the steps that we are taking. I did send out a letter to the community outlining these steps. And so one thing that we are doing as of September the 3rd, I believe, and that is convening a district-wide safety committee. We are asking for participants throughout the community because we really want to have a conversation about what is it that we are currently doing to share our protocols, but also to see where there are opportunities for us to grow and opportunities for us to continue in engagement with purposeful action steps. Finally, in addition to all those things listed, a community roundtable. We want to hear from our youth. What do the students think about safety? What does safety mean for them? We want feedback from our students, the youth in our community, and also guidance. And so we are planning to partner with the city of Antioch and to host our first youth roundtable around safety. So we're looking forward to that within the next month. Community meetings, we're continuing to go out in the community. We've been invited, I've been invited to meetings, I've met with many folk. I've received several invitations, not only with the county superintendent. I've met with the city manager and a host of other individuals who are prominent in our community. I call them the greatest influencers. And so I will continue to engage and to learn more about our community and also to make contributions. And so therein concludes my report for today, your superintendent's report. Any questions?
Looks like we don't have any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you all, thank you.
Next, we have our school reports under item A, back to school update. I'll turn it over to Kristini Barra, our Associate Superintendent of Ed Services.
Thank you. As Dr. Williams just shared, we had an opportunity, members of the board, to go out and visit schools over the last couple of weeks. And so this is from the, it was not the 22nd, what's the one before? The 15th, thank you. So this is the group of folks that we got to see on the 15th of this month. And so they are here this evening to share some of the highlights of their first weeks of school. And so I'm going to start off by welcoming up Kimball. And I do want to say, the Kimball staff has an amazing office person that does this beautiful work. So the boards that you see up throughout, not only in this boardroom, but in the halls, are done by them. And so we've been enjoying this week, watching pieces of it and watching it grow. We're like, we keep popping in like, oh my gosh, there's more stuff. So we've enjoyed it and I hope you all enjoy it. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome the principal, Kristi Steiner.
Hi, good evening. I'd also like to ask my vice principal to join me and one of our amazing parents, Mr. Sero, to join me also, so he can talk about how the back to school went. His daughter has been one of our students since kindergarten, so for the last few years. But we enjoyed having the Magic School Bus tour visit us. We got to see our superintendent play tetherball with, out on the playground with some of our students. And I think the hugs that were given by TK were also a very special thing given all around. But several classes were visited, TK, second grade and fourth grade at Kimball. So we were really grateful that you all visited us there. But I'm going to give Mr. Sero an opportunity to speak as well.
Good evening, everybody. So as mentioned, my daughter has been going to Kimball for three years now, since kindergarten. The biggest thing that I can say as a parent is the fact that all staff members care about our children as if they were their own. And that's something that I've always appreciated. It didn't matter if it was the fifth grade teacher or kindergarten teacher. I knew my daughter was looked after as their own. And as a father, that is so incredibly important to me. But recently, as just mentioned for safety, especially when we're dropping off and picking up, I've realized that all the staff members care equally about the safety of not just our children, but us parents. And that's something, again, that I highly appreciate. One thing that I want to say is not just the staff members, but the communities coming together as well. I'm somebody that truly believes that community is so important. And without a strong foundation, it's just, it's impossible to succeed. And I think Kimball has done an amazing job at bringing not only our students a better education, but make them feel safe, make us feel welcome as parents as well. Unfortunately, I didn't have that same experience myself when I was growing up. And I'm very happy that my children are getting that experience. So I just wanted to thank the amazing staff, all the amazing teachers, and just everybody here tonight for giving my child and my two children who are much older, but a great experience in school that I feel I never got to have. And I'm really looking forward to see her continue to progress at Kimball. And I hope to be more involved here at the board meetings as well as a parent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dana Gaspard, I am principal at Marsh Elementary School. And we brought our counselor, Ms. Calhoun. We brought fourth grade teacher, Sarah Marsden. We brought fourth grader, Deonte. We brought Max, fourth grader. We brought Seonye. And we brought Leilani. We're off to a, oh! And our vice principal, Vice Principal Rossi, yay! We enjoyed the Magic School Bus, did I say Magic School Bus? We enjoyed the Magic School Bus crew. They came in and saw Mr. Oscar Kadag's TK class, and they were learning compound words. They also got to see Ms. Marsden's fourth grade class, and they were doing their house games, something that you so graciously approved this summer. And we sent VP Rossi, and we sent Ms. Calhoun and Ms. Marsden for the training Ron Clark Academy. So thank you for approving that. And they're going to tell you all about it because Marsh is on the move and we're having an amazing beginning of school year.
All right, so my kids and I have had the privilege of piloting the house system. So the first month of school, we've been working on our house games, as you guys saw. We've also been working on improving our academic achievements. And just a sense of building community. And I, I really think that this house system is very successful with my kids because all of them have a sense of belonging and all belong in the house. So let me turn over to Ms. Calhoun.
As the awesome school counselor of Marsh Elementary School, I just want to say that our house system breaks all of our classrooms down into four awesome houses. And so what it does, it builds community and it gives our kids, all of our kids, a chance to shine. When we do our house games, there are kids who love to talk. Those kids are now our, you know, they're our speakers. They get to rally our teams up. There's kids who are, you know, need to get the energy out. They're the kids who are running the relays for the house, you know. It just, it allows an opportunity for all of us to get together and teachers as well to meet other students. So we have just had such a great time celebrating this awesome system at our school. And we are going to introduce our kiddos to help us promote what we've been working on. This is?
My name is Deonte. Oh, thank you. My name is Deonte, my team is Otri Ismo. Our chant is A-L-T.
That's right, all right. Next we have?
My name is Maxwell. I'm in the house of your. And our chant is this.
R-E-V.
R-E-V-E-U-R.
We celebrate each other.
Hi, my name is Seonye, and I'm in the house of Amastad. And I chant goes like this. A-M-I.
S-T-A-D.
My name's Leilani, and I'm Isabindi, and this is my chant, B-I-N-D-I.
Thank you, we appreciate you guys so much for listening to us.
All right, good evening, board, Dr. Williams, thank you for having us. Sir, come on, sir. I brought my moral support here. But we kicked off things a little different at Belshaw. Probably the first time since the pandemic, we opened the doors, families walked their kids to class. It really set a great tone for what's to come for this school year. And I, Harper had words to say about how he felt, how it started his school year. What'd you think? Want to introduce yourself?
My name is Harper. I'm in the, I'm in the third grade.
How was, how was your school year? How's it going?
It's going good, like, ever since I first started, they just cared about me, like. They just led me to their house or something.
Love that. Harper's mom has also, Ms. Erica Jackson, back in. She's also graciously taken on something that was important to me coming from my previous district, was to kick off our own APAC within our site, so we can start getting our voices represented. Well, not mine, but our African-American families. And hopefully that transfers into stronger engagement with our site.
There you go. Hi there, I'm Mindy Lutterium, the principal at Mission.
Hi, I'm Crystal Vind, I come the vice principal of Mission.
Hi, I'm Katie Holworth, I'm the school psychologist at Mission.
All right, and so we actually have a video, hopefully it plays. You might not get to hear the, the sound as well. It was a little low at our, at school. And if it does play and you can't hear, we definitely know what they're saying for you. And we asked the, there's kindergarten, third grade, and fifth grade. And we did get permission from the parents to record to show here. So I just want to make sure I tell you that. Here we go. So this is Riley, she's in kindergarten. And what she likes about Mission are the computers and playing with her friends. This is Kylo. He's in kindergarten, he's been here since TK. He likes the pickles that were served in the cafeteria. We do not serve pickles in the cafeteria. And he likes playing with his friends. This is El Noa, she's in third grade. She loves learning at Mission, she loves being responsible, and she loves the respect at Mission. This is Paulina in fifth grade, she's been here since Kinder. And this is Janay, she's been here, in fifth grade, been here since Kinder. She, Paulina loves it that she's going to middle school next year. And then Janay loves it that she's made it through another year and made it to another year at Mission. And she loves being with her friends. She sounded like she was an adult, like, man, I made it another day. All right? And then they both love that they enjoy the talent show at Mission. Definitely memorize this, all right. Moving on, we were so blessed, board, Dr. Williams, it was so nice to meet you in person, right? There's a difference between on Staff Development Day, listening to your inspirational speech, but to meet you in person was honestly an honor. And I felt more connected at that moment. So it was very, it was a great pleasure. And cabinet, thank you always for your support, I can't wait to meet you. Okay? But the Magic School Bus came and we had a, you know, had a quick tour. But I want to honor and thank our district for renovating our library just this past year. That was a big deal. We had the same cabinets since the school was built in 1973. So it was wonderful to have that. I want to praise Maintenance and Operation Department and the Tech Department for helping with this vision. I contacted them, I said, I want to put a wall up in the staff lounge, and here's why. I want a new VP office to bring her down into the main office and a conference room. But they said, where's the staff lounge going to go? Oh, don't worry, I have an extra classroom at this point, it's going to be beautiful. And they made that dream come true, so thank you to these departments. Then we got to visit some kindergarten classroom. It was a minimum day, we came into Fun Friday with disco balls on the head for D-Day. And then we went across the way to Ms. Burke's classroom in first grade, showing off their impressive skills of Give Me Five. And we know that classroom management and routine is super important. And within this time, you could just see the diligence that Ms. Burke has been working with our kiddos. So that was the Magic School Bus tour, and then?
So as always, our students are always excited about our wellness room. We have a beautiful wellness room at Mission, and it is like the place to be. Especially, I mean, even for staff members, we're like, we want to go to the wellness room. But our wonderful para that works in there has done an amazing job. And she's always switching things up. Like, I walk in there sometimes and I'm like, different. So it's great. And she does a wonderful job working with all of our young students. And they're, it's just super amazing. Our mindful life coach, Coach Tiffany, has been a blessing to us. She was with us last year, and she's again with us this year. And she just jumps right in, like, she is always there, she's on, you know, on call. She comes in, she steps in and helps with our students when they're having some big emotions, and she just talks them through it, and you know, with all the tools and the, and the different animals that she, you know, has with her lessons and stuff like that, and they grasp right on there. Ms. Crystal, our Wellness Together, mental health therapist is starting with us again this week, and she was with us last year, which is great to have another, have her come back again because our students are familiar with her. So that's also super amazing. And then our Mustang Market is our, we do PBIS, and we have a ticket system at Mission. And so the kids are earning tickets for positive behavior and positive, you know, showing how to be safe, be kind, be responsible, which is our mission way. And so that's opening on Tuesday, so they could, they've been saving their tickets, and they can go and shop in the mornings and buy special things. And the big thing that a lot of our students like to save for is the teacher splash at the end of this year, or staff splash at the end of the school year. So they save up and save up and save up. And then at the end of the year, up. And then at the end of the year, the teachers walk down the middle and it's just psh, 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 water, 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 water. And we are drenched from head to toe. So, but it's always a fun time. So I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Katie.
Again, I'm Katie Holworth. I'm the school psychologist at Mission. And we're really excited this year about our Guiding Coalition, which really is just about the adults working together to build community through collaboration, so that we can all become better educators for the students. So that is kind of what we're looking forward to.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Gowdy, the principal over at Orchard Park. And I have with me Erica Spinelli, and she's, she's been at our school since it opened, so in 2007. And she's, she's like a jack-of-all-trades. She does basically everything at our school, working in the office, out in the yard with the kids, in the classrooms. And then also by default, which shows how amazing our teachers are in Antioch, we happen to have a new staff member, but she's been in the district for a while, but Deanna Rendles, one of the PE teachers. She just so happened to be here because she came to support Harper. Is that right, Harper? And so then I saw her there. So I was like, that's so nice. So, yeah. So that was really sweet. So we're excited that she is joining our Orchard Park family as well. I'm putting them on the spot. But, so we were so happy that we had the Magic School Bus come. It was nice to show Dr. Williams our campus. They came right at, it was minimum day, so it was like dismissal for elementary, and then our middle schoolers were having lunch. So they got to actually see the kids out at lunch and talk with a few of them. So that was nice. I think we've had a really strong start to the school year. Some of the things that we're proud of is already just our school-family partnership. We had a very strong turnout at our back-to-school night. So that was very nice. And then we even had food trucks there just to feed, feed everybody. Snow cones, that were really good. And then also our amazing PTO put on a back-to-school event. And this is the first time that they actually took it off-campus. One of our PTO members works for Big Break. She works for Big Break. So they actually had to have it, got to have it there. They did some more's, pizza, played games. So that was a fun, different type of welcome-back event. And then for the first couple days of school, all of our teachers were calling and connecting with our families to welcome them back to the school year and get to know their students. And then another thing is also just the community building that was happening in the classrooms. A lot of our teachers did activities with the students, so they could get to know each other, start to feel like a little family. They were making posters of each other, playing games, where you had to go find someone in the classroom that maybe matched a card that you had. So that was going on. And then also our theme this year, which is saddle up for success. So we're planning on having all of our scholars succeed academically and socially. So with that, if you're walking through the classrooms already, I've seen our fifth graders were starting to read their first chapter book of the year, and they were all excited with the book open. And the teacher actually let them sit all around the room and partner on reading. And then we had, our little second graders were even doing math stations and moving around the room in their groups and working together to do some math projects. And then what else I put on there? I can't even remember. Oh, yeah, we had our sixth, this was really cute. Our sixth graders were outside, they're learning about early man, and they were making cave drawings. So the teacher actually had them outside finding like grass and berries, and they had to make their own type of cave drawing and then go back in the classroom and have another extension on that. So those are just a couple of the things that we've had going on on our campus. And I think that's all that I wrote on there. But yeah, so we're excited for a good year.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams and Board Trustees. I am going to turn this presentation over to the amazing Ms. Zaya White.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Dr. Williams, and those who are present. My name is Zaya White, former seventh-grade vice president, current eighth grader, and hopefully future president of Park Middle School. My principal, Ms. Plumlee, asked me if I wanted to come out and talk with you all about the first few weeks of school, and I said yes. First, I'd like to talk about the sixth-grader orientation. As a cheerleader, my team usually performs at these every year. This year, we did the same. However, this time, it was different. Both a team member and friend of mine and I had relatives coming to Park as sixth graders. For her, it was her sister. For me, my nephew. Unfortunately, no one on the team was aware that there were two different groups of kids. We just knew that we were performing twice. Either way, it was a great experience. The first week was awkward, as anyone could expect it to be. Everyone was getting new classes, getting used to their teachers and classmates, making new friends, reuniting with their old ones, and continued. On the first day of school, Ms. Plumlee had done the announcements, welcoming the seventh and eighth graders back and wishing the incoming sixth graders and new students a good year. During the second week of school, we had an assembly. Eighth grade had one day, seventh grade had another, and then there was sixth grade. I think the assembly was well-needed for those who are new coming into the school, so they could learn about our rules, meet our administrative team, and learn about the Park way, being positive, ambitious, respectful, and kind. As of now, school's going great. I think everyone's finally getting adjusted to everything this year, and I have high hopes that the school year will be the best.
She's amazing, isn't she? Yes, she is. We had the pleasure of having the Magic School Bus visit our campus. We only got into two classes, but we were able to see the students taking the iReady diagnostic in their math classes. And then we visited Ms. DW, who's one of our eighth-grade science teachers and also teaches our AVID elective, using some of those strategies with the students in establishing a strong vocabulary for their upcoming curriculum. And that's about all we have to say this evening. Thank you so much for having us.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Williams. I'm stepping in for Dr. Latonya Williams. She couldn't be here with us tonight, but I really wanted to share some of the amazing things that are going on at Bidwell. Dr. Williams has enrolled 100 students, and she's done an intake appointment with each of the students and their family. It's really unique that she sits down with every family, builds community, builds community with the students. And you go on her campus, you'll see the relationships she's built and the trust the families have in her. She's an award-winning principal, just a spectacular leader. They're, as you know, a model continuation school. And it doesn't stop with just Dr. Williams at Bidwell. She is an amazing teaching staff, an amazing classified staff. She has set the tone for high expectation. I know one of the things she's really proud of this year is the rigorous courses that she's added to the master schedule. You can see chemistry, physics, geometry. Teachers are, it's a small crew of teachers, but they are working super hard with our students, and we're just always so proud to watch our students grow and learn at Bidwell. And I'm certainly very proud of her leadership. So that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. All right, I will start myself. I'm new to the crew, but I am, if you haven't heard, we're calling it PET. I am the new principal of Prospect Encore and TGBA, Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy, TGBA for short, and we are calling it PET because imagining every time you answer the phone, the breath you uptake before you say it. With me today, I have the pleasure of having the Hox family, which I am new, but actually the Hox family is a great representation of what we provide here. So the Magic School Bus came, and you know what? I was so in grade and having my phone with my TGBA teachers, they were like upstairs with my Encore teachers. And the Magic School Bus, you saw a little bit of what we offer and the beautiful resources that are just in our staff there. What we lack in resources of just like having all these extra people, we have, and just the fact that our staff is dedicated. We're providing a safe space for students who just need alternate type of learning. They are brilliant. They are educated. Our Encore staff, the Golden Girls, as I called them, you have met them, the Magic School Bus went upstairs, they are phenomenal. They make sure that every student that is in homeschooling is getting that individual teachers. The teachers of families are getting one-on-one and tutoring themselves. They have decided to make math middle school because families have come back with feedback and say, I cannot teach my child middle school math. They have created a middle school math class for the families. Also for Prospect High Schools, like I have back here, we have students who have one-on-one intentional, but that first week is just sitting down. We are going through, our counselor, Ms. Cornell, goes through every new family. I talk to families myself. We are telling them what their goals are, what their credits are, what it realistically looks like, and the work that is required. Because although we are alternative ed, we tell our, we tell our students all the time, you know, we got to A now, look here. We are doing the same work, okay? So if you came to us thinking it's a free ride, no. We are doing the same work, but we are providing you with a space that it's not as cumbersome as thousands due to medical or due to social or due to other factors that just may come up. And families just want a smaller environment for their child so they can focus and thrive and learn. And then finally, for our TGBA families, we have a counselor this year, which is new, if you did not know. Ms. Crystal has done a phenomenal job. And just because our students are virtual, we have been trying to be intentional of having time for them to come in place. So Ms. Crystal has, twice a month, has Hangout Hub for the kids. They can come in person. We had our first one last week, a phenomenal turnout. We had forty-something students and their families coming out, getting off of virtual class and coming down to Prospect High School, just so they can be in community with each other. I'm going to stop talking myself, and I would love, I know she's like nervous.
Hi. Okay, so I basically agree with everything she said. The reason I personally moved my girls is I have, my oldest daughter is, was in sped, and I felt like in elementary school, she had a decent, what is the word I'm looking for? Like, she had decent team, yes, and they were like decent help in middle, or elementary school. But once we went to middle school, it kind of fell apart. Like, she was lost in the cracks. We've had IEPs where the teacher was calling her the wrong name the whole time. It was just a whole thing. And it ended up at the end of seventh grade, she was getting to the point where she was getting bullied and just being so far behind. There was a point where she was thrown in the trash can, and I just had had enough. And I pulled her and just put her on independent study for the rest of the year. And then somebody, I don't know who it was, told me about Encore. So I got in touch with Joe, and... Sorry, sorry. And he helped me get her enrolled and helped me get into the groove of Encore. And since she's been there, it's been night and day. Like, even looking at her grades from when she first, like her star test, her, what else do you, iReady, all that stuff. She's gone up, I think, a couple of grades just, well, you were there for one year, right? In the one year she was over at Encore. And then now she's over at Prospect's, and she has a phenomenal team. They're great at working with her needs. And that's where I moved, because I needed her to be taken care of, I guess. And then with her, I didn't want to deal with or risk dealing with the same drama, so I just kept her and moved her to Encore from elementary school.
Now, when she's at school, now, it's nonstop, but it's okay.
Nonstop, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe. I'm Jose Hernandez. I'm the principal for the adult ed program. I have been the last three years. I was formerly the Prospect's principal the last three years, so that's why I was blessed to meet these families. Along with me is Teresa Romo, my right hand with the adult ed program. We currently have about, right now, just over 200 students right now, but we'll service probably between 350 to 400 over the course of the year. Our ESL classes, we have three levels and a fourth level in the evening that's a multi-level class. All classes are full. We're on wait lists for every class. We are waiting federal funding release of some money for potential CTE classes. That's kind of above my pay scale about when we ever get those dollars. But we did receive our dollars for our other programs. So we started on the 18th. We'll start citizenship classes on the 23rd of September, and hopefully if we get some of those CTE funds, we'll start it as well on the September 23rd. If not, we'll, we'll see when those possibly get passed down from the federal level to us. I do want to commend Teresa. She came over from Belshaw and stepped right in when I was trying to run the three programs, as Mrs. Lewis knows now how difficult it is with all the different stuff down there. So it's been great to have someone who's able and willing to do all of the work. She's my night admin as well. Adult Ed is open from 8:30 a.m. till 8:30 p.m. So Monday through Thursday nights. So if you guys want to drive by, and you don't have to always be during the school day, you can always see us in the evening as well. So we had a great start to the year. We just started on the 18th, so we've only had about a week and a half of classes. And in those classes, we've had mostly just our pretests that are required by the state for our students. But they are excited. They are all leveled. They are from everywhere. We service a great group of families that are local to Antioch, that are immigrants from other countries, and they're just here trying to improve themselves. And so we're excited to start the new year with them. Teresa, you want to say anything? Yeah, yeah. Well, any questions for us, or that's not? Thank you guys very much.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for those back-to-school presentations. Really appreciate it. And thank you for sharing all of your experiences. Next, we'll move on to public comments. So under item A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. First speaker we have up is Velma Wilson.
Well, good evening, school board. You know, first of all, I didn't hear tetherball. You know, I used to do tetherball. I want to know who could do double dutch. Let's do some double dutch around here. But we're going to have to do a tetherball competition. But I just want a few quick announcements, because I want to make sure that we think outside the box. We want to make sure that parents and guardians get all the information in every form, fashion that we can do. So I want to just talk about all of the different community events that are going to be coming up, that are school-related, even the city and county-related. So tomorrow, August 28th, Contra Costa County will be hosting its seventh annual block party that will be housed here in the city of Antioch at the Water Park from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00. They will have an array of resources for families to get everything they potentially need, from food stamps, getting signed up for medical, and also even if they need other supports with housing. And all that will be housed at the Antioch Community Center, which would be the Water Park, on tomorrow from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00. Then we have for our veterans community, because I want to make sure we never forget our veterans families. Delta Veterans Group will be holding the Stand Down on the Delta on the week of 12th, September 12th through the 15th. It will be at the Contra Costa County Event Park. If you have never been at the Stand Down on the Delta, you're missing an amazing community effort to support families that sometimes get so forgotten about. And we have a lot of families within our district that fall under that category. And so right there, they will have all kinds of things available from A to Z. They can get those supports from the Stand Down on the Delta. September 17th, United College Access Network will be in collaboration with AUSD and Pittsburgh Unified and several other districts will be hosting the annual HBCU College Fair. This event will be at Pittsburgh High School this year, so make sure students are registering. Make sure we make sure that they are going to their work-based learning and college and career technicians to get registered. Also on the 17th, for special ed families, the CAC, the Community Advisory Committee, as a part of SELPA, will host its first meeting of the school year, and it will be virtually. You can go to the ccselpa.org, so you can actually log in to be a part of that meeting. September 16th is our own Parent Advisory Committee meeting. September 18th is our District English Language Learner Advisory, that's at 9:00 a.m. And last but certainly not least, on September 18th at 5:30 is our African-American Parent Advisory. There's so many opportunities for our parent communities and you, all of you, community members, teacher staff, to come out. Make sure you're getting that information.
Thank you. Next, we have Dimless Johnson. Does it need a second?
I understand, I understand, yeah. Okay, all right, sounds good. Well, good evening, President Hernandez, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Williams, cabinet members, and members of the community. My name is Dimless Johnson III. I serve as the Associate Director of External Affairs for Rocketship Public Schools. I bring greetings on behalf of Rocketship Delta Prep located at seventeen-hundred Cavallo Road. I just wanted to pop by in person and share three invitations to, for you guys to come out and enjoy the Rocketship Delta Prep family, and we'd be honored to have you at. First, on Friday, September nineteenth at five PM, we have our Hispanic Latinx Heritage Month celebration, and we'll be celebrating the cultures, histories, and contributions of our Hispanic and Latinx communities through student performances, music, and community presenters. Second, on October seventeenth at six PM, is our back-to-school night. And also during that evening, we will be unveiling our Delta Prep History Project, which we're really excited about, because we will be displaying a, a, a few plaques that highlight the former board members, community leaders, and families that helped bring Delta Prep to life. Then last but not least, on Friday, October thirty-first, which is Halloween, at five PM, we have our trunk-a-treat event. Our annual safe, family-oriented Halloween celebration brings together staff, families, and community partners for decorating trunks, treats, and fun activities. I've sent a brief email containing RSVP, RSVP details to you all, and I will continue to follow up as the dates draw nearer for each of these events. Once again, thank you, and I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Tanya Maragon-Gordon.
Hi. I'm a parent at Orchard Park School. I am asking for help for safety for our kids. It is insane in the parking lot. I'm just gonna read this so I keep all my thoughts in order. We have no buses, no crossing guards, no crosswalks, no sidewalks. The street parking needs to change, the pickup process, name cards in the staff, I mean, in the windows, like Lone Tree and Diablo Vista do, would be great. The staff parking along the right side of the parking lot so that those spaces are not empty during parent pickup would be great. I've had experience at several schools in the district, Deer Valley, Antioch, Dozier-Luby, Prospect's, Lone Tree, Diablo Vista, and Jack London. I've had three kids go through Orchard Park from kindergarten on up, and over the last twelve years, I've watched the traffic just get worse and worse. It is insane. The second day of school, there was a collision at the intersection at parent pickup where the Corvette siding was off of the vehicle. It was a T-bone situation. There has been a child hit. The turning point for all of this extreme traffic was when UPS had Oakley paint the spaces on the street as tandem instead of slanted. They also put up those temporary blocks to where nobody can turn left out of the parking lot, so this just makes Oakley parents add time onto their commute back home. The current situation at pickup is double parking every day, leaving blocked spaces along the sidewalk. There's zero visibility coming out of the parking lot. I believe a simple solution to the parking situation would be the slanted parking spaces on the street. It would be great to have a traffic light, but that includes Oakley. And I've been told by the mayor's assistant that they rely on funding from development in the area to pay for things such as sidewalks. And it's a residential area, so what are we holding up for? The parking lot, I think we need to adopt how Lone Tree and Diablo Vista does it and have staff helping the kids in and out of their cars. We have absolutely no crossing guards to cross these kids that are walking down to Main Street, and there's a construction zone. We have the UPS hub right there, big trucks exiting and entering the roadways all the time. Kindergarten drop-off is the worst. Just today, just trying to get into the school at pickup, there was a parent blocking both lanes to go both ways into the parking lot. I asked her to move back, and I went into one side of the parking lot to look for a parking space, and I had to exit and come back around, making a U-turn further down the street to come back to the parking lot, so I didn't take ten minutes to come around traffic and then get stuck at the intersection of Live Oak and Oakley anyways. That intersection needs a crosswalk and a crossing guard. As far as the school goes, I think we can just get staff.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's, so everyone gets three minutes and, and then, yeah, per speaker. Next, under individuals to address the board regarding item, but feel free to reach out to us, board or to any of the staff here, and share more of those concerns.
I've sent several messages, and there are several parents. There are like petitions that I can get going.
You're, you're always welcome to do those kinds of things, but yeah, well, to get your information, make sure someone reaches out. Next, under item B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the, from district employees. We have none. There are no district reports. There are no items that require a public hearing, and there are no public presentation items. Moving on to consent items, are there any questions or items to be pulled for discussion or a separate vote?
Hi. Go ahead. No, I don't have. Ten N is the approved, the job description, full-service community school site coordinator for two, I believe it's two schools. I asked our district questions about whether or not, once these grant funds are depleted, that's how we're paying for the coordinator positions, what will happen. And, and the grant funds are for about five years, and after that, we'll just have to work through it to make sure that we can get more funding. The reason why I asked that question and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because if we're going in this direction or any direction, is thinking about long-term funding for things so that it's not, we start something good and then we have to end it. So I just, because I sent the question, I wanted to just share what the, the question and the response was, and that's it. Thank you.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. So then, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no, and the motion passes, so the consent calendar is approved as presented. Moving on to eleven, under action items, I'd like for the, to call for a motion, if the board's okay with it, to discuss item B, the employment agreement for Associate Superintendent Human Resources, before we talk about item A. Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I make a motion, too.
Great. And then, do we have a second?
A second.
Great. And then, all in favor of talking first about item B before item A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no, and the motion passes. So we'll go ahead and start with item B. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Darnice Williams.
Thank you, President Hernandez. We bring, again, the proposed agreement for the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources position. We do ask that you consider the employment agreement for Dr. Camille Johnson. Dr. Camille Johnson is a results-driven educational leader with over twenty-five years of experience in classroom teaching, site leadership, district administration, and executive consulting. She most recently served as Associate Superintendent of Human Resources for West Contra Costa Unified School District, where she oversaw more than thirty-five hundred employees in fifty-four schools, negotiated with multiple labor groups, and drove strategic initiatives that strengthened recruitment, retention, and employee engagement. She has successfully implemented systematic, systemic research-based change at every level of TK to twelve education. Her experience includes strategic human resource development, collective bargaining, policy alignment, conflict resolution, and organizational change management. Dr. Johnson holds a doctorate in organizational leadership from the University of Laverne, a master's in educational leadership from Chapman University, and a bachelor's in interdisciplinary studies from Texas Women's College University. Her professional recognition includes the Outstanding Leadership in Education Award, CASA 2024, and National Schools to Watch Principal Designation in 2019. Dr. Johnson is driven by the belief in, a belief in equity, inclusion, and empowering people, and is committed to cultivating a high-performing workforce that ensures all students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally.
Great. So this, this agenda item is, addresses the board's open session discussion and possible approval of the Associate Superintendent Employment Agreement with Dr. Camille Johnson regarding her employment as Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. So as background, the board previously considered the approval of the employment agreement during the August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five board meeting. So to ensure compliance with the Brown Act, this matter got brought back forward to the board in order to provide an oral summary of the agreement prior to board discussion and consideration for final approval. So the board will discuss the Associate Superintendent Employment Agreement, which, if approved, includes the Associate Superintendent's compensation and benefits. So the proposed Associate Superintendent Employment Agreement also contains the following material items. The first is term and work year. This employment agreement employs Dr. Camille Johnson as the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources for a period beginning on August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and terminating on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven, unless terminated earlier as provided in the agreement. The Associate Superintendent shall provide two hundred sixty days of service to the district during each year of the agreement. Item two, salary. Effective August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, the Associate Superintendent shall receive a base annual salary of three hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and zero cents, which shall be prorated for working less than a full work year for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. The Associate Superintendent shall be entitled to the same longevity and educational degree stipends as other senior management employees. Item three, sick leave. The Associate Superintendent shall be allocated twelve workdays of paid sick leave per year. Item four, health benefits. The Associate Superintendent shall receive the same district contributions towards health and welfare benefit premium costs, including dental and vision, as the district's contribution towards health and welfare benefit premium costs paid by the district on behalf of senior management employees of the district. Number five, automobile stipend. The Associate Superintendent shall receive a monthly stipend of three hundred dollars for the use of her personal vehicle to conduct district business within Contra Costa County and outside of the county, irrespective of the number of miles traveled. Five, conclusion. That concludes the summary of the terms of the Associate Superintendent Human Resources Employment Agreement. A complete copy of the Associate Superintendent Employment Agreement is available from the district office upon request. So next, is there a motion and a second to approve the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources Employment Agreement?
I only have a question, and I'm sorry, only because I was sick at the last meeting. I wasn't here. I haven't seen this. This is the first time I'm seeing this. And my question is, the Associate Superintendent's base salary would be similar to what we have in our, our own group, which is our cabinet?
Yes.
That's all I want to know. If it's all the same, then that's all I needed to know.
Yes, it is, according to the pay scale.
I'm not questioning you should have it or not. I just want to know that we're all equal in the salary schedule. Thank you. All right.
So, yeah, is there a motion to approve the, the contract?
I move to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
Great. Is there any other discussion? Great. Otherwise, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote of this.
Trustee Cobos Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Yes.
Trustee, or, I'm sorry, Vice President Rocha?
Yes.
President Hernandez?
Yes. So that unanimously passes, and we have approved the employment contract. So welcome, Dr. Camille Johnson. Great. Next, moving on now to item A, which was the initial proposal from California School Employees Association for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. So now I'll turn it over to our formerly-approved Dr. Camille Johnson, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, President Hernandez, members of the board and cabinet. Thank you for approving me once again. So as you all know, on August thirteenth, CSCA's initial proposal was publicly presented during a hearing to the board in compliance with government, government code three-five-four-seven. The proposal now returns for a formal acceptance as required before the twenty-five, twenty-six negotiation process begins.
Great. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve this action item?
I move to approve.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on, there are no resolutions for first reading. There are no items for information, discussion, and action by board. Under, under resolutions for immediate action, I will turn it over to Christine Barra, Associate Superintendent of Ed Services, and Dr. Camille Johnson, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources.
All right. So we are gonna do something a little different. I wanted to share with you some of the activities, oh, no. Oh, thank you. Some of the activities that our schools participate in or will participate in, just so you get an idea. I know we get these resolutions. There's a lot of words in those. We send them off to our school sites, but I know there's interest in what are our schools doing to celebrate these. And so I wanted to share, we're bringing them kind of by season, so starting with fall, this month, September, is attendance awareness month. And so there's a lot of ways in which our schools at all the different levels participate and encourage and celebrate our students when they come to school or when they've improved their attendance. And so these are just some of the ways. I won't go through every single thing. One of the ones that I thought was really fun and interesting, especially for our older students, is creating TikTok videos and clips to kind of encourage their peers to attend. Also, in the month of September, is our National Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month. And so there are a number of ways. I've seen them, I've seen door decorating contests myself, and those are fun. Each school will pick, or each teacher in a school will pick a specific person that they want to raise up and celebrate, and the students will engage in some learning around those people, and then they do a demonstration on their doors for a competition usually. So these are some of the things in which our schools can engage in activities for that month. And then Constitution Day is September seventeenth. So here are some of the ways in which our students can engage with the Constitution and participate, learning more about it, and doing fun things like poetry and debate. In October, we have Filipino-American History Month, and looking at all the ways you can bring in their culture, the dance, the food, and story circles, and, and lots of, lots of great ways our families can engage and share their culture along with their students in our schools. And I was, I had to include the lumpia, because that is like probably my favorite food. I will eat them until I'm sick. Character Education Month is also in October, and so looking for creative and fun ways for our students to understand what character is, the importance of character, and how they can create activities where they encourage kindness and different ways that they can do that. So here are some of the things that they will do at their schools, I think. Oh, and Week of the Administrator, is, uh, School Administrator is October thirteenth through the seventeenth, and so we all find ways in which we can celebrate those at our sites that are doing the work day-to-day with our families, boots on the ground. So that's coming up in October, and I believe that is it. So that, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan.
I wanted to thank you for sharing. I think when I was my first year on the board, I remember asking about the resolutions, like, so what do we do, right? Because we can make a resolution, but what does it actually look like? So this is the first time that is very clear, like, different activities that the staff and the students engage in around the resolutions that we pass. So thank you.
And so we are also working to compile some activities that we can send in, in lessons so that they're ready to go at the different grade levels.
Can I add something to that? In the knowledge that I have in the back, where I've been to the different schools, the ELAX have a lot to do with the Latino month. the ELAX have a lot to do with the Latino Month. And normally each school has something, either a, a dance, or food, or celebration in each school that is celebrating that particular.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the final resolution is bringing forth the authorizing instructors, instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the 25-26 school year. To be clear, these are fully credentialed teachers for our specialized, um, assignments or specialized, um, teaching positions that are needed. We are authorized to give them a credential outside of their normal credential. So just always want to emphasize, these are fully credentialed teachers. Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, all the resolutions A through G presented.
I move approval.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve resolution items A through G. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Uh, moving on, there are no resolutions for second reading and action, there are no board policies for first reading, there are no board policies for second reading and action, there are no information items for general information, um, and under 19, future agenda items from board members. Um, are there any additional, uh, potential future agenda items?
I have one.
Yeah, Trustee Kobo Smith.
So, you know, one of the things that we approved, um, the, the funding for was the Wellness Together, um, that, um... There we go. That we have. And so, um, I, I was just reading about the Wellness Together program, and it's, sounds really amazing. And so I would just like a presentation on it, not just for myself, but just because I know that people do watch our recordings, and just so that, just to get, start getting the word out, so that families are aware that the program exists, like people who may not, um, come across it. I spoke to, um, a few people in my circle, and nobody knew about it. I was like, wow, did you guys know we have this amazing program? So if we could just get a future presentation.
Yeah. And is the rest of the board okay with that?
Oh, yeah. That's wonderful.
Great. Any other future agenda items?
Oh, excuse me. No, I noticed, I just noticed that we have some pending already.
Yes, yeah. So attached to this agenda item, as you can see, is any, uh, future agenda items that have been, um, stated, requested in the past, and then, um, the date they were requested, as well as kind of an estimated time of when we'll be able to present on them, yeah.
Yeah. I would like to add one item, and that is the report on what is going on with the, uh, uh, oh, I knew it was gonna go off of my head. Uh, the, uh, new program that we have over at, at Deer Valley for, um, the service.
The, oh, ROTC.
The word, I couldn't get the word out. The ROTC. I know that it started, and I know there was children, students that were applied, but I don't know where it's at at this point. And if I could just have some info, even if you put it on this, uh, paper.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Trustee Lathan?
Yes. Um, I'm not sure if this is really a future agenda item as much as it is, um, thinking about the, the information that's on our board agendas, it would be, um, might be helpful to have a formal place on the agenda for committees, um, just to give an update. Otherwise, we say it in the reports and comments, but it'll be nice to have a designated place where we can give a short update on how each of the committees are going.
Yeah, I think right now, the, the way it's structured is, it is in that, uh, section 21, reports and comments from board members and the superintendent. Um, that's kind of the time to talk about any kind of updates on committees as well, but, uh, we can definitely talk about maybe, um, different ways that that could maybe look like, or different intentional ways of thinking about that. Great. Any others? Great. Moving on, uh, are there any additional comments which exceeded the first 30 session limit?
No.
Um, and great, so now at this time, uh, board trustees can report out and comment on committees and their service to their, uh, community and their roles as board members. So maybe we can start with Trustee Lathan.
I don't have anything. Yeah, I don't have anything except thank you all again for the magic school bus tours. It was nice that we got to visit all of the schools and the, um, kitchen, the main kitchen for the district, and, um, the different offices, maintenance, so otherwise, that's it.
Vice President Rocha?
I just want to say, I'm sorry that I couldn't attend all the magic buses. I did go a couple, but I ended up getting the COVID, and so I was home for three weeks. And I missed a lot of the openings, the classes, and in fact tomorrow, if nothing else, we have the high school, maybe I'll catch that one. But I really enjoy going to the different locations, and in, and this, I have to thank you for the opportunity of visiting our schools the way you did it. It gives us, uh, a chance to not only welcome, but also see for ourselves, and we have individually as, in the persons, but as a group is good, because then we're all seeing the same thing. And thank you for that. And I also hope that, um, we have some, continue to continue to do something. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. The safety is so important. Thank you for reporting on the safety, and then we'll have a committee that we're gonna be de, dealing with that, especially after today's date. And I hope we can close in the memory of these children that passed. Thank you.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Yeah, I'm surprised that Dr. Lathan did not talk about our city school meeting. After saying she wanted the report.
Please do it. That would be so wonderful.
Yeah, it, it was actually great. We're actually coming together, and we're moving forward. We'll be connecting with the community, where, um, that, that will be our next, um, session, and, uh, we'll next several sessions. And then we're hoping to actually start taking action in, um, a measured way in the community starting in January. And we're hoping also to connect and have like a full, um, session with both the city council and, um, the full board. And I'm excited about it.
Can I add to the, um, Mr. President? Can I?
Yeah, Trustee Lathan.
Um, oh, thank you for saying that. Um, Doc, um, Trustee Kobo Smith, one of the, we'll talk, we'll bring this up, um, for the rest of the board, um, in more depth, but the city council has requested, some city council members, for us to get together. Um, and at our last city schools meeting, we talked about the possibility and how that would look, and we're waiting on some information from, um, attorney that rep, for our district, and then also the, the city attorney to talk about the, the possibility. I've seen it happen before, but we want to make sure we're not breaking any Brown Act. So one idea came up in terms of like a study session, um, that that could be the possibility. And the goal, we would have to flesh out the goal, the, the city schools committee would do that. Um, but one of the things we were talking about is how do we think about sharing resources? What are our values as a school district and a city that, where we can be aligned? Um, because the work in Antioch, just like a lot of cities, but in particular, um, for Antioch, is about how to support our schools to be, um, well-functioning, high-functioning, kids are supported, families are supported, but also the folks in our community, because our kids are a part of the community. Um, and so thank you for sharing that, Trustee Smith.
Anything else?
And, and we will be having our first sped meeting, um, or the, actually our first of this school year, but also our final, because the ad hoc sped meeting will be coming to a close, so.
And we did receive a quick request for an announcement, as long as the board is okay with that. If he nuts, yeah, then we'll go ahead and, uh, get a quick announcement from Velma Wilson.
Sorry, because I, I thought about it. I was sitting here, and I was listening to Dr. Jag, and then I was listening to, uh, Olga, and I was like, oh, shoot. I sat in on today, the racial, um, juvenile justice meeting today. And, you know, hats off to AUSD, because they gave a lot of, uh, kudos to the district for their work around restorative practices. And they were talking about really focusing on the, at the high school level, and I was able to interject and say, well, actually, we're a restorative school, school district, so it's not just at the high school level, it's actually at the middle school levels, um, and elementary school levels as well. And so, and being able to really speak to that work that we're doing around restorative practices was super huge, because it's important that we know that the community doesn't think we're just one thing, we're just focusing on one demographic of students, we're focusing on all of them. And if we don't know that students are being approached with, in doing behaviors younger, and they're getting younger and younger, and we can start attracting those students to think positively at the younger ages before they get to high school, it's a win for this district. So shout out to AUSD, because it did come up in that meeting for the, uh, with juvenile justice and the probation office, and they really gave a lot of praise to what Antioch Unified is doing, and, and really asked for other districts to get on board with that work. So that was a good thing. And I also just wanted to just also just say, um, we can't forget, forget, the parent involvement equals student engagement, and, and it really overall equals student success. Let's not us, let, let us not forget our parents, and making sure that we're doing everything we can to continually to, and not only involve them, but engage them.
Thank you. Great. And then, as far as my comments, I do, um, owe you guys, uh, at least a book or two, because last time I forgot. Um, so this book, uh, that I shared today is called One Can Be, uh, by Pat Zietlow Miller, and I think it shares such a really great, uh, message that you don't see represented very much. Um, and you could see on the back, it says it's an ode to introverts and quiet leaders. Um, and it's a book that really honors like the time that people spend on their own, the ways that people spend time in solitude, and how that, um, adds and enhances the times that you spend together with other people as well. So that, um, I think it's such a really great message for kids. Um, I think we get lots of great messaging for kids, and it's very well intentioned of like spending time with others, spending time in community, but also honoring that, um, sometimes you need time on your own, and that's a really important thing, um, to help uplift too. So I thought this was a really great, really neat book. Um, and then, kind of on the other side of that, and in the spirit of, uh, you know, our back to school, uh, is All Our Welcome by Alexandra Penfold and Suzanne Kaufman. Um, and it's just a really great, fun book about, um, you know, all the types of different students and people that make up our community, um, and acknowledging that they really are all welcome when it comes to our schools, when it comes to our community, and when it comes to, um, the kind of, uh, place in society that we want to build. Great. So moving on to, uh, future, uh, meetings, uh, there's a special board meeting scheduled for September 10th, uh, 2025, and a regular board meeting scheduled for, uh, September 24th, 2025. Um, and those will be here at the Antioch Unified School District Office Boardroom on 510 G Street here in Antioch, California. Um, so lastly, adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can we close in fa, in, uh, in memory of our children that passed?
Yes, in honor of, uh, the children that passed during the incidents today.
Thank you.
Uh, so there's a motion from, uh, Vice President Rocha. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and motion passes, and we adjourn the meeting at 8:47 PM.